Good morning. Sorry for the delay. I was catching up with Ms. Gardner, but welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting of St. Petersburg College on Tuesday, August 18th. And we're thrilled to be here on the Seminole campus. So thank you so much. If we can all rise and we'll have -- Trustee Stonecifer will lead us in the invocation.
Lord, what a joyful day it is to be here together. It seems like it's been a long time since we've all been able to meet and discuss this important institution of higher education together. It's an exciting time as well. It's the start of a new semester, a time where students have the opportunity to begin anew and fresh. We ask that you would bless them and their journey towards a better education for themselves, hopefully a better life on the other end of this. We ask that you would give our professors and teachers and our faculty here the strength to be flexible and to pivot in this new semester with new rules and new understandings of how to do things as we move forward. Thank you so much for the opportunity that we have as a board to lead this school, help us to make wise, smart decisions as we go forward. Thank you so much for all that this community college means in our area and Pinellas County. In its near name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we have a retirement resolution today. Dr. Woods, are you with us? Please come on up with Dr. Williams.
Katie has just been amazing here at St. Petersburg College. I've had the privilege of working with her personally. We also went to school together, so we're definitely amongst friends and family. Resolution: Whereas Dr. Catherine Woods began her career as a faculty member in the dental hygiene program at St. Petersburg College in 1998. Later, she became an academic chair, served as interim program director, interim dean of allied health, and then academic chair of health sciences. And whereas Dr. Woods has always been dedicated to teaching and has continually connected with her students and colleagues to ensure the success of those she taught and mentored. She has spearheaded curriculum changes to enhance academic programs and to create more opportunities for student achievement. And whereas Dr. Woods has continually exceeded expectations in her roles of instructor, dean, academic chair, and mentor, she is dedicated to the dental hygiene profession and remains active in professional organizations. She has participated for many years at the local and state levels and currently holds leadership positions. And whereas Dr. Woods volunteers regularly at food banks, dental health clinics, at local schools, and for various fundraisers, she has a special passion for those with special needs and has served as state and local Special Olympics Clinical Dental Health Director. Wow. Now therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Dr. Catherine Woods and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College this 18th day of August 2020. Dr. Woods.
It has been an honor and a privilege to work with and for the students here at St. Petersburg College and all my colleagues. And I want to give a special shout out to some of the committees that are extremely important to the college. The Academic Integrity Committee, the OLS team. So it's been very, very -- I can't even put into words how exciting it's been to work for the college for all these years. You'll always be a part of my heart, and I'll always bleed SPC blue.
Thank you. Very good. Next, we have our SPC spotlight. So Dr. Williams, are you going to lead us through the two new hires?
All right. Our first one is Dr. Matthew Leal Troth, our new Vice President for Academic Affairs. Dr. Troth has an extensive background and has already hit the ground running. He has not stopped since he's been here. We're so proud and so happy. Welcome, Dr. Leal Troth.
Chairman Cole, Trustees, President Williams, it's been a true pleasure. The last six weeks have been some of the funnest six weeks of my life. And I want to say that the faculty and staff have done an amazing job getting ready for our first day of classes yesterday, which went off without a major hitch. And we're just so happy that we've figured out how we're going to do this, and it's working really well. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to you and your family.
And Dr. Ivana Pierre comes from USF and has joined us as our new Equity Officer. Dr. Pierre.
Good morning. I am in my second week, not quite six weeks, but I'm in my second week, and I'm very excited to be here and to be working on behalf of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion for St. Pete College. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. This morning is our annual organizational meeting that we are obligated each year by Florida statutes. So section -- excuse me while I read our very formal script to be sure that we are compliant. So Section 1,001.61 of the Florida statutes requires that each year at its first regular meeting after July 1st, the College Board of Trustees shall organize by electing a chair whose duty it shall be to preside at all meetings, to call special meetings of the Board, and to attest to actions of the Board. And the Board shall also elect a vice chair to act as chair during the absence or disability of the chair. So pursuant to this requirement, I now open the floor for nominations for the Chair of the Board of Trustees for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
Madam Chair, I would like to formally nominate you, Katie Cole, to chair this Board of Trustees for another year. I believe in this time, with everything that we've gone through in the past six to nine months, it would be nice to continue with your leadership.
Thank you. I would accept if there's a second.
A second in our mission.
Thank you. Any -- there's a motion and a second. Any comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And as a result, I will serve as the Chair again. And I appreciate your confidence. And I know that Mr. Stonecifer served for two years as well. And so I took his example. And you spend a lot of many months learning what is going on at the college, and I'm still learning every single day. So I appreciate the opportunity to serve again. And my relationship with Dr. Williams grows every day as well, so we can be more and more productive. So thank you very much for that confidence and faith. I now open the floor for nominations for the Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
Madam Chair, it would be an honor for me to nominate Ms. Bridget Bello to be Vice Chair again. She's done a fantastic job. And I would love to see her in the Chair seat one day in the future. But that would be my nomination.
And is there a second?
A second.
And would you accept that nomination? Is any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As a result of the vote, Ms. Bridget Bello has declared the new Vice Chair or the continuing Vice Chair for 2021 fiscal year. And I agree. Ms. Bello has done a great job in her service, especially with ISPS and getting involved in those committees and with being on campus with the students is invaluable. So thank you so much for everything that you do for the college. Now if we can just get the governor to reappoint our board members. Rule 6 HX 23-1.04 of the Board of Trustees' Rules and Procedures requires the Board of Trustees to establish a schedule at its annual organizational meeting for its regular meetings for the college's fiscal year, including day, time, and location. I propose the following schedule for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021, which is included in your packet as Agenda Item 2-C3, beginning with today's August 18th meeting date and moving forward to the June 15th, 2021, meeting date and meeting monthly therein. So unless otherwise scheduled, regular meetings of the Board shall take action. General business of the college shall occur on the third Tuesday of each month, starting at 9:00 a.m. at St. Petersburg College's EpiCenter, 13805, 58th Street North, Largo, in room 1-453. Meetings at the Trustees as the governing Board of Directors of the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School Charter School shall be scheduled in accordance with the requirements of Florida Statute Section 1,002.33. Properly noticed, special meetings and workshops may be scheduled annually at this organizational meeting or scheduled throughout the year. Appointment. I do think we need to vote on that, don't we? Can I have a motion to accept the meetings, please? Ms. Bello, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now with the appointment of representatives to direct support organizations. Further, the following trustees to appoint to serve on the Board of Directors of each direct support organization pursuant to our rules and Florida statutes. While the Chair of the Board of Trustees appoints a representative to the Board and the Executive Committee of each DSO established under this section, usually during this meeting, we ask for the Board to self-select it as well. So it's a combination of both. So for the St. Petersburg College Foundation, I would hope that Mr. Stonecifer, would you be willing to continue this year?
Absolutely. Thank you.
And for Leepa Ratner, Mr. Kidwell, would you be willing to continue?
Absolutely.
And for the Institute of Strategic Policy Solutions, Ms. Bello?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Gibbons. And those are Chair appointments, so we do not need a motion on those. So with that, we will wrap up our annual organizational meeting and move on to comments. So comments of the Board chair. First of all, I'd like to congratulate everybody on a wonderful first day of school yesterday. I know it was a little bit different. And on Friday's Welcome Back, having that via Zoom. I know Dr. Williams spent the day yesterday going campus to campus, and she'll speak some more about that. But I can't say enough, I know that each of our board members has expressed our gratitude to the faculty and staff and administration ever since we were put in this position in March. But the way that this college has risen to the challenge of moving so quickly online, incorporating so many new technologies, our faculty has adjusted to that and really embraced it in reaching out to the students. So we just greatly appreciate all of that. It's been an exciting summer watching that evolution, having our new administrators here on campus to get college -- our schedules that have been a challenge. And the Board has asked you all to adjust those schedules, and you're really rising to those challenges. So we can't say thank you enough for that. So it was extremely exciting on Friday morning, having the grand opening of the Student Success Center on the Gibbs Campus. We can't wait until it's officially open at post-ribbon cutting when students are back on campus and we have our certificate of occupancy there. So it's a beautiful facility, and it's one that we can all be proud of. So thank you so much for that. With that, Mr. Gibbons, any comments?
I'd like to just say I'm sorry I missed the -- I was out of town on Friday when we had the opening of the Joe Lang Center. It was a very nice event and a very nice building. And I'm glad that we finally have that behind us. And I know the students and the community will enjoy that facility. Thank you to all the staff and other folks who have worked on that facility and working with folks to get that ready. And congratulations to the college. Job well done.
Mr. Stonecifer? Ms. Bello? Mr. Kidwell?
No.
Very good. Dr. Williams, I know you have a lot at the beginning of the school.
Well, I do. I am so proud of the faculty, administrators, and staff for all of the flexibility and the hard work that you have done from your homes, as well as some of you who are in the office. I'm not going to spoil the good news that Dr. Renard hopefully will share later, and so I'm going to leave that alone. I do want to welcome the committee that put together Welcome Titans. It was an amazing event. At some points, we had over 800 people on the line. It was lively. People were very engaged and involved. And I'm very proud of the work that you have done to put that together. Some good -- other good news is since COVID, the foundation has raised $863,000 for the college, which is amazing during COVID because many people aren't giving money at that time. The Grants Office was awarded additional about $300,000 during COVID, which was amazing. And also, the grants received some renewals of some of our grants to the tune of $3 million. So I'm very proud of the work we have done to maintain continuity and to keep things moving forward. And we have a lot of new partnerships and opportunities in the pipeline right now that you can tell in my voice. I'm very proud and happy, and I can't wait to unfold all of those things. But it would not have happened without you and to the trustees who have taken my calls at night on the weekend and the evenings, reading those emails and things of that nature. Thank you for being responsive. I know that you have families and things to do. But as things unfold, you have been flexible as well. You know, we are still living in a moment-by-moment situation with COVID, with the economic downturn and the social unrest. And so we're going to have to be able to pivot and live moment by moment. And that is the leadership that the trustees certainly have exhibited and provided, as well as our colleagues on the line, in the classrooms, in their offices, and sitting in the audience. And so I applaud you, and I thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
With that, we do have an opportunity for public comment. And is there anyone here? We did receive a request for public comment from a representative of ETNA who could not attend in person. But because this is a live, in-person meeting and not one of our former Zoom meetings, we don't have that capability for interactive communication during the meeting, unless you're here in person. So is there anyone else that might be here to speak?
Madam Chair, I wouldn't want to speak on anybody's behalf. But what I would ask is since they couldn't be here in person and that they're watching, that they can reach out to the President and get some of these questions that they haven't answered. And full disclosure, they reached out to me. I had -- I couldn't answer their questions, but I understood some of the questions that they had related to the insurance product. You know, I can't, one way or another, say where the Board would have been on the issue. But I did -- I would entreat them to reach out to the President, make sure that they can get their questions answered. Some of it sounded like it was a mix-up. And unfortunately, at this point, I mean, I think the cow's out of the barn a little bit here in that we have essentially made a decision on where we're going. But at least they can have an opportunity to deal with Dr. Williams and figure out where they went wrong. Maybe that'll help them in the next process or something.
Absolutely, Mr. Gibbons. Thank you. And they have now, last night, reached out to Dr. Williams' office in an attempt to coordinate attendance today. And for those of you who may not be aware, this is specific to, on our consent agenda, the transition from being self-insured to moving to the State College Consortium, which is part of our consent agenda. So ETNA, who is the underwriter for the insurance provider that we currently have, had some questions about some of the numbers. So we can pull it off the agenda when we get to that time if anybody feels like they want to discuss further anything that we had already discussed at the workshop earlier this month. So thank you. With no public comment, we'll go ahead and move to our board business, which is the review and approval of minutes from our June 16th meeting. Is the first set of minutes that were provided to the Board for review. Are there any comments or questions or clarifications?
I move to approve both the June 16th meeting and the workshop from July 27th minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Gardner, monthly reports.
Good morning. Congratulations, Chair Cole and Vice Chair Bello. Do not have a report this month.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And our strategic focus, Dr. Renard. I got a preview of this yesterday, so I'm excited.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair. And congratulations, members of the Board. Dr. Williams, I'm Pat Renard, Associate Vice President for Enrollment Services, here to give you a briefing on our fall enrollment as of yesterday morning. Without a doubt, this enrollment cycle, which began at the end of April, 1st of May, was the most unusual and unpredictable of my career and perhaps at the college in general. Early on, we thought, you know, there are certain value propositions that we should be telling our community, our prospective students and our current students in light of this pandemic that we're in. The first one was in light of the unemployment in the county, that we've got short-term programs to get folks back to work under the leadership of Dean Ramsey and others. We had a lot of press around that with programs that are as short as 16 weeks. Also, that we wanted to remind the community that online instruction is nothing new to us. We've been doing it for 20 years, and we've been doing it pretty well. We also wanted to remind the community that we're an excellent value, especially as students might be considering the university and that they could stay here for their first semester and then explore going off to university after the first semester or after a year, especially in light of the fact that the campus life and residential life on university is going to be a little bit different. We also wanted to promote our new online, live instruction modality. I'm going to share more information about that in a moment. And lastly, just to promote the excellent work of our faculty. Chair Cole, you mentioned this in your remarks, the way that we have been nimble and able to pivot to remote instruction, to remote services for student support from advising. We thank the foundation for their good work, the Learning Support Center, the tutoring folks. So it was really a team effort. Also wanted just to kind of position what we felt we needed to do with recruiting and onboarding. So we knew that we pivoted with instruction, but with recruiters not able to go out and through the community, you know, we had to really think differently. We used a lot of new technology, as you also mentioned, Chair Cole. The Explore SPC is an recruitment event that we held in May. Traditionally, that's an on-campus event. We've had an online component. But predominantly on-campus, that was completely online. We served 600 students or prospective students with that event. Throughout the summer, our recruiters and admissions folks, financial aid folks hosted Zoom webinars called "How to Become a Titan" to help with the admissions process, the financial aid questions. We had numerous, I counted 40, I got a schedule of 40, student life and leadership online engagement activities from April through July. We also had webinars promoting the new online live modality for students and parents of students. And then I'll just touch on the last one briefly. We, in the last two weeks and throughout this week, we've transitioned from appointment advising to a quick virtual advising, which has increased our capacity to see more students as we advise students here in the last couple of weeks before the term began. So we did set some goals. The college established a student semester hour goal for our budget of 210, 758 student semester hours through Sunday. We had reached that goal at 210, 740 student semester hours. We gained another 1,000 student semester hours yesterday. So we're now on our way towards the stretch goal that you see there of 234,000. Don't know if we'll make it, but that's what we have our eyes set on. This does look at year-over-year. It's really the only slide that has the year-over-year data this year in the presentation. So in terms of headcount, we have the pleasure and privilege to serve 23,841 students this fall, with the opportunity to gain more enrollment in the 12-week session that starts in September and the shorter eight-week session that starts in October. We're down 11.5% in headcount, as you see, and we're down 10.6% in student semester hours, although that was planned. Leadership looked at the budget, made some adjustments, and set their eyes on that 210, 758. We're at 210, 740 through Sunday. Off to the right, you see that disaggregated, and you see that lower division is really where we're seeing the biggest decline in enrollment, minus 12%. And upper division is only minus 2.5%. Happy to touch on reasons why later, if you'd like. So this looks at the pie chart on the left is proportionate student semester hours. Our upper division enrollment accounts for 16.6% of our enrollment. That's up from proportionally last year, about 15%. Off to the right, you see headcount data, student program or their major. So you see the number of students by program in the green bar, and then the percent of total off to the right there. So non-degree-seeking students, those are students that are here for an enrichment purpose, taking Spanish, not intending to seek a credential, as an example. Our collegiate high school students, our early college students, and the like. You see baccalaureate students. By far, the AA and AS are the largest numbers of students. They represent 65% of our total. This looks at headcount by race and also by gender. So to the left, you see again the headcount by race and the percent of total. Every headcount, every race breakout is down to last year, this year. The Hispanic is down. And that's the first time in recent memory, maybe six years, that Hispanic population has been down. Off to the right, you see the proportion of male and female. I will point out that the male proportion last year was about 37.5. So we lost proportionally more males through this pandemic than we did females. Okay, this looks at headcount to the left by type and also by status. So by type, there's three types that we categorize. The continuing student, that represents the majority, the 77.4%. That's a student who's been with us this fall, and they were enrolled in at least one semester in the last year. The new students is that light green, 15.2%. The brand-new to SPC, never been here before. And then the readmits, in the purple, the 7.4%. Those are students that have been here before, but it's been a year or more since they've been with us. The interesting story, and I think the biggest takeaway for me in this enrollment data, is the decline in our new students. So proportionately, we're looking at 15.2%. the decline in our new students. So proportionately, we're looking at 15.2%. Last year, that was a little north of 17% percent of total. We just didn't get the new students coming to us this year. We dissected that a little bit. The recent Pinellas County High School graduates did not come in the numbers that they normally come at. So typically, we would have 17 to 1,800 recent Pinellas County seniors matriculate with us in the fall. Last week, when I looked, it was in the 1,200 range. So we're 500 to 600 fewer Pinellas County graduates. So we began to reach out to those. Many of them had applied to the college and just had not registered. So we began a phone campaign and began to reach out to those that applied and just to hear their stories. Some thanked us for the reminder and that was kind of the nudge and they got in that virtual advising queue and we got them enrolled. But the theme that we were hearing is because of just the uncertainty of what's going on in the economy and whatnot and the pandemic, that they were going to take a semester off and/or a year off, a gap year or gap semester. And that's what we're reading in the literature. There's just a number of students that are going to take a job for a year or a semester and then pursue their higher education. The enrollment status is our full-time, part-time ratio. So you see roughly two-thirds are part-time and a third is full-time. We did pick up 1% proportionally in full-time this year over last year. Off to the left here, you see head count by age category. Again, every age category is down. Interesting to note, if you didn't know, the proportion of students that are 26-years-old or older is about 45% of our total student body. The one that hurt us the most with the largest decline is the 18 and under, and that's for the reasons I just mentioned with high schools, students just not coming. And I want to just mention a minute about the modality. So this looks at, off to the right, the student semester hour sliced by all the different modalities that we have. And I want to just draw your attention to the live online, which is new. It was new for summer and now for fall. And I'm really proud of the institution that we were able to pivot and move a quarter of our enrollment to this new modality, which is a little synchronous in that there's a assigned day and time for the student to meet with their peers online through Zoom and with their faculty members. And it also has the asynchronous portion where they can do the rest of their work on their own time. And also, I'd draw your attention to the online, the purely online, at 61.8% of our enrollment, which last fall, that was 47% of our enrollment. So between the increase there and the new modality, that's the shift away from the face-to-face. So my observations, just want to say that I think the college was very and is well-positioned to handle this crisis. We're strong, resilient, nimble, and as already been pointed out this morning, just really proud of how we have adjusted to adapt and meet the needs of our students. We achieved 100% of our budgeted student semester hour goal, with opportunities to increase that throughout the semester. Our upper division enrollment is outperforming our lower division enrollment. Year-over-year, we did see a 10%, 10.6% decline in student semester hours, but again, we kind of positioned ourselves and planned for that decline. Our largest decline is in new students impacting our AA and our AS enrollment, and that 25% of our enrollment is in the new live-online modality. And then lastly, just want to remind you that, I've already said it, but we do have opportunities to promote the shorter sessions throughout the term. The Midtown Campus had success in the spring with this 12 and 12 campaign, where a student can take 12 credits in 12 weeks. We will continue to reach students who are near the finish line and remind them about the Last Mile Scholarship Program and then through marketing. And my office continued to reach the stop-out students that were here in the last fall or in the spring that haven't graduated and are not yet enrolled for this fall and to contact those that have applied but are not yet enrolled. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Renard. Questions? Yes, sir.
Dr. Renard, thank you for a great presentation. Two things is, one, it would seem like, I would just want to know more about our recruitment process in terms of overall recruitment. Is there a combined concerted effort or are we trying to recruit for individual campuses? Because you said that the AA stuff is down, right? Are we recruiting for programming? Are we recruiting overall for the college? And then, number two, you talked about the 12 and 12 program. What was the success rate of that? How many students passed those programs? I'd really like to know that.
Okay. I'm going to have to bring back the 12 and 12 success metrics to you, Trustee Gibbons. We did implement a new recruitment model. It was formally approved, I think, back in April or May. And it's a more centralized approach where the six recruiters now report to the Director of Recruitment Services, Mr. Reggie Reed. They, for, the recruiters are based out on campus and they do support the campuses, but they are also assigned to two or three of our academic communities. So we divided all of our majors into 10 career and academic communities, kind of meta-majors, if you will, and each one of those is assigned to two or three of those, so they can really specialize and do more of a deep dive into those communities, get to work more closely with the deans. Reggie, myself, the recruiters have been having Zoom meetings for the last two months with the deans, chairs, and faculty to learn more about their programs, so when they're out in the community, they can be more knowledgeable and speak about those programs. Although they are still supporting the campuses, too. We're having monthly meetings with every campus and provost.
So who has the most control over the recruiter? Is it the campus provost or is it you and Mr. Reed? Because I guess I'm asking that question because if I were recruiting for a company, I couldn't have somebody that only knew certain specific parts about a company. They'd have to answer all the questions throughout the entire organization. You know what I'm saying? That's not a knock on anybody. It's just the fact that realistically, when you come into an organization and you're recruiting, you should be able to answer just about any question. Now, there are going to be some questions that come up, granted. Listen, I can't answer every question about Ann Scott. Pretty close, but not everyone, right? But that, to me, could be a deterrent for students. If we're taking one student who has a question and say it's about, what's the program out here for the hotel, motel, whatever it is?
Hospitality.
Hospitality, right? And they can't answer a question about hospitality, and we got to say, oh, well, you call this person or we're going to send you this person. Emails, you know, just the amount of time it takes to get back to somebody. When you have a person and you can talk to them and they can completely answer your questions and your parents' questions to make you feel comfortable, that's going to make it seem like we know what we're doing, right? So that's why I asked that question. I eventually say that, you know, probably, and I'm just assuming this, so you can tell me if I'm wrong, I'm just okay with it, Dr. Renard, is that the person that's on the Clearwater Cube knows most about the Clearwater Cube, right? As opposed to knowing more about downtown and midtown. So we probably should look at, and this is just a suggestion, a cross-training. Now, maybe every other month, they get to learn something new, like the program you have, Dr. Williams or folks, the leadership, they go around all the campuses, they learn all the people, they go to Tallahassee. I don't need to go to Tallahassee, Dr. Renard, but it may come back worse.
I think what you're referring to, Trustee Gibbons, is, you know, are the recruiters more generalist to know more about the college as a whole and not just in one area? And I think that we have done some work there. I'm not sure we've gone deep dive, that they know all of the pieces, but maybe we need to look at what kind of ways we can help them become more generalist as well, at least to know enough to get the student the right answer to move forward. I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah, because now these students are asking more and more pointed questions, right? You know, I don't, look, my kid goes to school, he's taking aviation. I was like, when did you get, like, when did you start? Like, I don't know, you know? They know what they kind of want to do. It's all internet-based, they're doing all, so they know probably more than what they're asking you, but they just want to confirm it. And sometimes if we can't confirm it, you know, they're like, well, let me go somewhere where they did confirm it, or the parent's like, I'm more comfortable with this. And we just got to get better at answering those questions, like, right there on the spot, right?
So what you're also referring to, our advisors do a very good job with some of that. But the other piece is, where does marketing come in when we talk about marketing-specific programs and not just the college in general? And we're moving in that direction. We've done some of that with the deans. They have pushed hard on the programs that they feel are either under-marketed or the enrollment's very high and people want to get into it and we need to do better marketing. So recruitment and marketing, the deans and the provost are coming together along with Dr. Renard as we look at our plan going forward. We have one.
And please, you bring up a good point. I'm going to tell you something real quick. Dr. Renard, great presentation, not a knock. I'm just saying, that's just some of the feedback, just from listening to what you're saying in terms of being, because like I said, the questions I get, I can't answer. I usually send them to Rebecca now. I can't answer about the college, there's so much going on, that I really can't dive into the specifics, you know? But I say, you know, hey, hold on, parent, I can get you somebody so that that first point of contact, they should be getting everything they need. They shouldn't have to go anywhere else. Yeah, instead of being passed on. The other thing is, it's so funny, you mentioned marketing, Dr. Williams. I was talking to a person in FSU's president's office this morning, actually, and I asked him, I said, you know, how is it that every time I go to Tallahassee, I don't care what you watch on television, it's TCC to FSU, TCC to FAMU. I mean, they're on the news, it's on every, I mean, it's like, they get always, are they getting free commercials is what I was asking them. And they said that there are, and I knew some of this, but like Spectrum, for example, they have partnerships that they'll create with nonprofits. And maybe we should look at marketing that better, because I'm telling you, you don't leave Tallahassee not knowing you can't go from TCC to FAMU or TCC to FSU, because it's all over. Apple yard drive, same thing. TCC to FSU, I mean, it's all over the place, right? I mean, our Fuse program is a good program, but if you don't know about it, there's no, they don't market it. We do, but I don't, never seen them market it. So.
Thank you. Any other comments? I have one. With respect to our enrollment numbers, how do the high school students who will, who haven't started school yet because of the delays and are both the collegiate high school as well as dual enrollment and those students, have they already registered or will see those numbers come in in the next month after they start?
In terms of dual enrollment, collegiate high school, they're registering right now.
Okay.
Yep. I know Dr. Sesta's office, he emailed me over the weekend, they're busy registering dual enrollment students.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Renard, thank you. That was great information. It's fantastic that we met our goal, considering all the unknowns that we had this year. Couple questions. Do you have any idea what we anticipate the bump being from the 12 and eight-week courses that are still kind of left out there for people to sign up on for the fall semester?
I can, well, spring's not a good example because that's when the pandemic hit. But when I reported enrollment in January, on spring, at the beginning of the semester, we were minus 3.5. And Trustee Gibbons asked me, where do you think you'll end? And my estimate was, at the end of the spring, we'll end up minus 2. We ended up, at the end of the semester, at minus 2.8. So I think had we not had the pandemic, we may have been somewhere in between 2 and 2.8. So we'll gain several thousand student semester hours. Will we reach 234,000? We'll see.
Well, I think it'd be great to split the difference, at the very least, right? Be above budget and a bit under where we were last year. But I appreciate all the work you all have put in. And I think over the next year, it's going to be even more critically important to focus on continuing those calls with students that maybe haven't come back or haven't enrolled and asking questions of students that we do have here. You all are already doing that. But I think we have to constantly be seeking out why we're missing out, especially right now. And perhaps there's nothing we can do to grab some of these students because they have decided for their personal life that with all these unknowns, it's safer for them to not enroll in school. But we won't know that unless we ask. And so I think we keep asking the question, and I think the focus has to continue to be on the value that St. Pete College offers them, to almost give them the ultimatum of, you know, how can you not do this right now? This is a great choice. And this will position you in a better spot on the other side of this as well. So that's unfortunately work that just is never going to go away. It doesn't normally and it's definitely not going to right now with all the things we don't know with the pandemic. But the last thing I'll say, and then I'll turn my mic off, I think, and I know we already are, but at a certain point, we're going to have to start talking more about how do we get this low-hanging fruit of male enrollment back up? You know, we've picked at it a little bit the last few years. That spread continues to stay the same or get a little larger. There's a lot of males in Pinellas County that could probably use a higher education that aren't enrolling for some reason. So, anyway.
Dr. Williams, to piggyback on Mr. Stonecifer, you know, we should really look at a grant on how we get males in general back to work. I don't think it's an issue of black or white anymore. I just think it's a male issue and they need a lot more support and a lot more things related to whether they have a criminal background or whatever, but they need a lot more support. Maybe there's some grants out there we can look at. But I agree with you. I think we got to really look at focusing on, that's two to one. That number we saw there was like 63 to 35 or something like that, right? That's two to one almost. I mean, you're, you know, we're eventually going to be all female. And that's okay, that's who's coming to school, but we really should have a conservative focused effort. I agree with you, Mr. Stonecifer.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Griffith and Ms. Eddy, Midtown.
Morning, Chair Cole, President Williams, and members of the board. Thank you for taking time today to hear about our presentation for the Midtown Digital Inclusion and Enhancement Request. I'm Erin Eddy. I'm the Government Relations Director for the college, and I will be co-presenting today with Dr. Tashika Griffith, the provost for the Downtown and Midtown Centers. It has been brought to our attention that DOE might be considering funding some one-time requests sometime in the near future that would uplift high-needs communities and would have a long-term impact on the area served. In a collaborative effort throughout the college with the guidance of Capital City and assistance through the governor's office and DOE, we have decided to focus this funding request on our Midtown Campus, since technology and access are of great concern for this community. This request would function as a budget amendment, which is the reason we're presenting it to you today, but it would actually not require an existing amendment for our operational budget, if that makes any sense. Instead, it would be a request sent to the state for $1 million in funds for this programmatic project. We've been informed that this opportunity could be released in the form of a grant, but we are not sure as of the details, since they have not been released at this time. The governor's OPB office and FDOE have provided the guidance on how to proceed along with Capital City, which was the reason for proceeding with a budget amendment specifically. The request being presented today will have significant impact on the Midtown community through an expansion of programs and upgraded technology. You will see an overview of this request on the slide before you, which Dr. Griffith will elaborate on.
Good morning, Chair Cole, board members, Dr. Williams. I'm Tashika Griffith. I have the pleasure of serving as the provost for the Downtown and the Midtown Centers. We all know the impact of COVID-19 and the racial pandemic. What it's actually also served to do is increase the existing challenges. What it's actually also served to do is increase the existing challenges that we face related to education and technology disparities. The request gives us an opportunity to actually bridge these widening gaps with existing programs, technology-based, in order to better support all of our students. Clearly, the college is committed to supporting our African-American students, and we want to build on that support. So we have our Cecil B. Keen Summer Enrichment Program, which is offered to students in the eighth to 12th grade. It's a STEM with arts-based program that we offer for six weeks, and we do this to help successfully prepare those students for school and hopefully transition them into a college environment. So our goal is really to prepare them to potentially be future titans. We would like to increase our participation to up to 85 students. This year, we had the opportunity to engage 24 students who signed up for the enrichment program, and we were able to graduate all 24 of those students. It was the first time that we had to pivot to an online format, and the students were very excited, and they loved the opportunity. So we'd love the opportunity to actually see that program grow in capacity. We also have in our Learning Resources Center, a children's library, which is a pride of joy for us. A lot of the parents who are SPC students, their students love it because the children use the library to read books, our staff actually helps them engage in programming and activities. So we'd love to build on that by creating a digital learning lab. That digital learning lab will have immersive technology available to those students, to the children, tablets, headsets where they can take virtual tours, and it will really allow the reduction of anxiety that a lot of the parents who are students have, as they're getting tutoring service, they wonder about, okay, what do I do with my child? So having that digital lab will help reduce some of the barriers and anxiety that our students have who are parents. Additionally, we know as a college, we did a phenomenal job with our technology lending program, so we would like to house that permanently and have that available for our students at the Midtown Campus. Finally, we are so very grateful for all the work and effort that went into the establishment of the Jamerson Center. We'd like to build on that with our Cecil B. Keen Building. So we'd like to actually add an innovation lab with emerging technology that will help us meet the expressed needs that our workforce industry and our industry partners have said we really need to make our students more marketable for hire. We also want to make sure that we build on our existing IT and cybersecurity program at the Midtown Campus. So having that innovation lab in that Cecil B. Keen Building will help us with that. Finally, we'd like to add a Wi-Fi hotspot extender to the building to offer internet access to the community. As I mentioned, with our lending technology program, we have a lot of students who will borrow equipment, but the Wi-Fi access would be a challenge. So having that extender will help with that and will also help with community members that are near the building to have that Wi-Fi access as well. So now I'll re-invite Erid to the podium to go over budget highlights.
There we go. Okay. The total requested funding for this is $1 million. It strategically incorporates multiple one-time specific funding costs. There's a line item you'll see for personnel, which does not include new personnel, but rather increases hours of OPS staff we currently have, whose hours have been reduced due to budget cuts. Renovations and technology upgrades seek to update and enhance the Keen Building for expanded usage, including improvement and expansion of workforce programming such as cybersecurity. And this will also give the Keen Center that same feel as the Jamerson Center when you walk in. Improving technology access at Midtown will be impactful to students for years to come. Finally, funding for summer bridge programming at the Cecil B. King Center will help SPC serve additional students in preparing them for post-secondary education and will combat what is likely to be increased learning loss after COVID. The next steps. We are certainly in uncharted territory with this request, it is a bit unconventional, and we do not have all the specific details on how it will specifically work at this moment. But we are attempting to be proactive and strategic with this request so that if that potential, that opportunity does arise, we are ready to jump on that opportunity. We will continue to work with Capital City, the governor's office, and FDOE throughout the completion of this request. And in closing, this digital enhancement funding for Midtown can make a significant impact for the SPC community, so we do hope that you approve the funding request today. Thank you for your time, and do you have any questions related to the requests for Dr. Griffith or for myself?
Thank you both. So just to clarify what we're being asked to do, this is a programmatic budget request, and so there's not expenses that would be incurred unless we receive the grant and authorize the spending. But in order to apply for a grant or qualify for a grant, we have to show that these expenses and these programs are in our budget. So it's a kind of a chicken and egg type of situation.
And to add to that, we were advised by DOE that we had to have minutes from the board meeting where you've discussed it, so that's.
So, so we're being asked for two things in response to this, is one, to say that yes, this is a good idea to offer these programs at the Midtown Campus and that we support that from a programming standpoint. And then secondly, this will serve to amend the budget, which would be, I know Janet's not a below-the-line type of item that would only be spent in the event we receive the grant, so money in, money out, so.
Correct. It would be in addition to.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gibbons.
Madam Chair, I have a few questions.
Yes.
Thank you for these, for presentation. One is, do we have, we talked about corporate partners in this presentation, do we have any letters or testimonials from those corporate partners saying that they'd like to see this stuff done in Midtown?
So do you believe that might be a bit more for Dr. Griffith? Yeah. Or even perhaps Ms. Schultz?
Me too. We've done several proposals recently for the Midtown community, in connection with the grantee, that target what employers are looking to do in the Midtown community specifically. So we do a lot of letters related to that, as well as we did a comprehensive assessment related to corporate needs in that community or across the college.
Sure.
But it is supported by.
And so we have letters that specifically speak to this program that we're talking.
Speaks to the.
The general, it speaks to general, okay, so we don't, we don't. So we need to probably do that. Have we had, do we have any letters or have we talked to any parents, students, and et cetera in the community? How many letters of support do we have from folks that actually live in the community that'll be utilizing this program, these programs at the Midtown Campus, saying that these are the types of things that they'd like to see done? How many letters do we have of that?
So I'm going to answer that, thank you, thank you. Trustee Gibbons, at this point, we do not have any letters from parents regarding this particular.
Or students.
Or students regarding this particular program, but we do have needs that have been brought forward to us that they wish we could offer these things that we're not able to offer.
Then we do have things in writing from them.
No, we've had meetings, I've met with people personally, I've also met with city officials and others regarding the same need and concerns, and there are like maybe four groups in that community that has talked about, hey, we need Wi-Fi for the community, we also need resources for our children in that community to learn, especially since some of them are being homeschooled or kept home because of Pinellas County and things of that nature. But what we're hoping to get today is the board's approval to move forward, and we can certainly get codify and get all of that, but we do have a lot of interest and a lot of individuals asking, can the college serve in this capacity? But we don't have an official letter from Urban League or groups.
Sure, I think to Mr. Gibbons' point, not to put words in your mouth, prior to sending this up to Tallahassee, I think your suggestion is.
I've got a few more, I've got a few more, I'm just going to tell you, Madam Chair. Everybody has their expertise. I'm glad that our former chancellor, Madeline Pomerango, walked in. I see this dead on arrival, the way it's done right now, because you got a half a million dollars in infrastructure improvements, and I'm going to tell you that this grant, and I'm very familiar what they're going to ask for, wants to know how you're going to affect people, effectively change people's lives, like how, how much money is actually going to the student, not to doing infrastructure changes, that's why I'm asking you. Have we had discussions with the actual students so that they could be testimonials saying, this is what we don't have currently and what we need going forward? That's, that's going to be a big part of this. The other thing is that for folks that don't know, that when you go to Tallahassee and you ask for those things, when you ask for grants, that's what they're, they're going to break that down and say, how much is per student? We're adding 60 students to a summer program, we're getting a million dollars, and half a million of it is going into renovations.
Well, we're also serving children and providing them with laptop.
I understand that, but just hear me out on that, you hear what I'm saying? Half a million is going to renovations, so the smaller end of that is going to 60 students, new students.
Yeah, but these are, this is a one-time cost where those students, it'll be 60 students, I don't know if we have it broken up by semester or per year, but multiple times over years and years and years.
Are we going to continue, that was never said that we're going to continue the 60 students going forward.
Different, right, a different group of 60 students going forward.
So it'll be 85 students every year now.
That is the plan, if we get the resources to do that work.
All right.
I think, but to Mr. Gibbons' point, I think he has a lot of expertise in so, in these issues, and so for today, we're being asked to do the amendment to the budget and to authorize the team to put together the grant request, and so I think if we can get those technical aspects done, the actual details of this particular grant have not yet been released, and so.
Madam Chair, I'm not trying to poo-poo on anybody's parade, but what I will tell you is I get all the time that, from folks, individuals who utilize our campuses and who go to our campuses, who don't feel like they have what they need there, that we go to groups and ask them, who, people who drive out of the community, live in their nice homes, right? And they are saying, well, this is what we need for the community, but they don't actually utilize the product.
What I, what I'm saying is, I'm hearing you, and if you.
I agree, I hear you hearing me, but I'm just giving you that one more, that's the thing that I get often from people that actually live in the community, that there are a bunch of groups that are supposed to have the best interests of the corridor in mind, and they don't, they're worried about what they can utilize and what they can do, so, as well.
Yeah, I think what we can ask the team to do is when you're actually putting together the details of the grant, because it's both a good idea and in light of Mr. Gibbons' request, you know, really providing those testimonials, reaching out to the community to refine these types of things is always important, which I know you all do regularly, but yeah, so.
We could do that.
Did that clarify, I know, Ms. Bella, you had some questions about exactly what was, okay. Any other questions?
When the weakest amongst us can go out and get a job, then we've done our job.
I'm sorry, what?
I say when the weakest amongst us can go out and get a job, then we've done our job. And that's why we really should know everybody that lives around that place, all, all of our campuses, not just somewhere, because there are people all around our campuses that are reading, so.
Absolutely. So we need a motion to amend the budget and authorize the submittal of a to-be-determined and defined grant application when DOE issues that request. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. And just as a special thank you, I see Mr. Turtle, this was an opportunity Capital City's been working with DOE and the governor's office and brought to the college, and a special thanks again to the foundation for agreeing to fund that relationship with our Tallahassee lobbyists. Certainly, if we can have opportunities like this that we can close and receive funding on it, it definitely makes it worthwhile, so, thank you. With that, we have a consent agenda, we have no old business, and on new business, we have administrative matters, workforce and corporate partnership changes, grants and restricted funds contracts, bids, expenditures, and contracts, and other, are there any items that anyone would like to pull off the consent agenda to discuss? I will say not to belabor things, but I did have a conversation with Ms. Gardner about the DOE sale of real property, and so I have a comment about that if anybody has other comments. I just, today we're being asked to approve the sale price, and the contract is still being negotiated, and based on the memo in the board packet, I just expressed some concern surrounding the contingencies in the contract and just have asked Ms. Gardner and her team to be sure that from a closing date standpoint, our expectations align with reality. If we're, have a 90-day due diligence and 30-day close, but the buyer is seeking any type of extraordinary approval, governmental approvals, that approval process may be longer, especially in light of the fact many jurisdictions aren't having public meetings. And so my two concerns were both the timing of closing in the event there was a entitlements change, and secondly, ensuring that any change in entitlements would obligate the buyer to close, because I don't want our use of that building to be frustrated or, yeah, to, if there was a future change in entitlements. So those, those two items, and sorry, we were just weighing in on what I do in my professional life, and so I have the need to express those items. But if you all are okay with those two comments for the staff to consider, we can move on to consent agenda unless there's other comments.
So do we accept the consent agenda as printed with those changes that the board chair and ask for?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just?
Yes.
Since we voted on that, can we get, it reminded me when I was reading through the Nature's Table lease proposal for Tarpon Springs, is there a way the board can get a report on leases we have throughout campus and what we've done in the way of any deferments or help through COVID, just so we have a full understanding of what that looks like? Because there's a lot of moving pieces on a lot of different campuses, it'd just be good to know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Very good suggestion. In your packet are informational reports with Leepa Ratner, Palladium, ISPS, any questions about any of those, or any of our board delegates have anything to say about that? We have operating budget report with revenue projections, contract items, purchasing, just making sure nobody has any questions and you all write your reports. So we have no proposed changes reported with the rules manual. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Williams for your report.
Thank you. So legislatively, right now, we're continuing to spend a lot of time with our chancellor and the commissioner, learning what's forthcoming with the budget and staying focused on that. The Council of Presidents will have their first meeting of the year coming up soon regarding how things are going to be handled up to the start of the legislative session. We have not received any other news regarding budgets at this time, other than what we've had in the past, that there may be an additional holdback, we don't know yet, but that was the latest word that I received, that there could be additional holdback funding from the state colleges and as well as up in operations. So we don't have any info on that, but we'll keep you posted should anything change from there. Our main focus right now is keeping students learning and moving our employees forward. So that would be my report at this time. We'll continue campus visits. I will be holding a State of the College address for all faculty, I'll do one for the career service staff, and then another one for the administrative staff to share where we are as an institution and hear their concerns. We will more than likely send a survey to the college and use that information as my foundation and springboard for this important State of the Union address. We're focusing seriously on communication and making sure that all employees know what's going on and that their voices are coming towards us as well, so we know what's, what's happening. And so that is my report for today.
Thank you. With that, our next meeting is September 15th at the Gibbs Campus at our new Student Success Center, and we will. new Student Success Center. And we will, while we will adjourn this meeting, we do have a Collegiate High School Board meeting. So with that, we'll adjourn and reconvene as the Collegiate High School Board. So Ms. Metz?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Cole, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. I'm Star Lametz, the Associate Vice President of Collegiate High Schools. This morning, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to bring forth the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School's innovative reopening plan and the instructional calendar for the 2020-21 academic year. I presented these to you at the July workshop, and this morning I am requesting respectfully your approval of these two items. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? We saw this in July, and just needed to formally approve it. Is there a motion?
We approve, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I believe, Mr. Gibbons, just for clarification, was that for the reopening plan or for both the calendar and the reopening?
The calendar and the...
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. The last item on the agenda is the school safety assessment, which occurs every summer, is conducted by the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department to ensure the safety of our staff and students. I'm required to inform you of any recommendations or findings. I'm pleased to inform you that there were no recommendations or findings for our Tarpon Springs campus, and only one recommendation for the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus, which was to extend the counter to create a barrier so that people could not go directly to the rest of the offices. Thanks to our wonderful in-house team, that counter has been installed, and so therefore we are in compliance with the recommendation. Do you have any questions for me?
No, ma'am. Any other questions? Thank you, and good luck with the opening.
Thank you so much. We had a great first day.
Great.
Everything went wonderful.
Good.
Thank you.
And with that, we will adjourn that meeting unless there's other questions about Collegiate High School. And the board will be staying for our strategic planning session. So thank you all so much for those who are not going to be staying. You want to have a five or 10-minute break?
Yes.
I know we weren't supposed to start for a while, but...
But I think we need to get our...
She's here. Let's do it.